6:43, I call the Halifax Planning Board into session. All members present. On the agenda we have 6:30 Autumn Lane, Don Triani, Azbilly. 6:45 Kenya Kenya for Pasture Lane. And 7 o'clock TBD 241 Franklin Street Solar Project Form A. Discussion for vote on the Planning Board applicants to replace the missing member. Bill to pay for Amory and minutes to approve. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Motion to accept the agenda as read.
Is there a second?
Alright.
All those in favor?
Alright.
So do we hear from Don Triani?
Um, I, yeah, I was just telling him. I emailed him, he's a fireman, I couldn't get a touch on getting him so. I emailed him again and told him to give him the schedule to the planning board. I said if he could make it, you let us know which would be convenient for him. But I never heard back from him.
And Larry Mayo didn't have an update?
He...
Just that email?
Just the email that he sent, he was sending out and then hoping to get some reaction to that.
Oh, a letter.
Did you get that?
So what do we do on February 10th? Thirty days after this letter? Because we say we're gonna hold him and his successors in interest, responsible for all costs, fees and expenses.
Like the next step in this situation, if he doesn't pick, you mean?
Yeah. If we send him another letter? If we send him another letter?
Which means this didn't mean anything, like a bluff, you mean? And of course, this is a new thing that we're doing, right? So we don't really have a process. I mean, if you read Larry's email, it's like... We'll have to decide what course of action to take.
Basically, what's happening is turning over the town council to pursue.
Yeah, but he's saying it's gonna be up to us to decide what we want to do when he doesn't respond by the 10th, right?
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
To sue him, I imagine his entity, whatever this thing is that he owned it under G and G Realty Trust, or it doesn't exist, or it has zero assets to go back to.
We don't even know if he has an insurance policy or anything.
No.
You know?
Who knows? When's our next hearing? 7:00 to 6:00, we're just gonna miss the deadline.
So...
We'll look at it until the 10th, we'll be early.
The former owner...
Then line comes up.
Who developed and just didn't do anything with that lot and sold it, however that happened. We can't add him into that in any way, shape or form.
He is the guy.
Yeah, he is the guy. That's the thing I think is good.
He is the developer.
In the last paragraph...
It says mobile, yeah.
This is the...
That's what confused me.
Yeah, this is, I think, the most important part of this. Because this at least means that he's responsible even though he sold it. So I think that's like the best part of the whole letter. Because that's what I was hoping, that like, that guy's still responsible, he should be.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was looking for, yeah.
That's the best part of that, is that he kind of wrote that down, so.
I like that. I'm with your agreement.
Charlie, do you have any idea what it costs to sue somebody to get them to...
Probably thousands of dollars, probably. They're going to trial anything like that.
Yeah. And he's gonna buy it?
Six figures, which is, we're looking at for road work.
What's the end result, maybe you get a settlement out of it where you write a check for a couple grand to the town to help offset the cost? Maybe between...
Well, I think what we're looking towards more than just a couple grand.
Not like $50,000 or whatever the number is, yeah. Are we still on a parallel path evaluating with the current owner whether or not he would donate the parcel? Is that still part of what we're doing concurrently, or did we stop that evaluation?
Yeah, I'm still pursuing that.
Is there anything going on there, or is it just kind of waiting for this one to point its course a little bit?
He wanted to see if Goodman was gonna do anything.
Okay.
It, when this... Lot is held, like when they used to do this, when the lot is held, is it something that's at the registry of deeds that marked that lot as...
There's a covenant on the law, yes.
So who closed it?
I think it was private money, or no money, I don't know.
But when the attorney closed it and...
Maybe.
No title search?
Or maybe it still exists, right? Because the guy won't be able to get a building permit for that lot until the road's finished, right?
But it shouldn't, it really shouldn't be conveyed.
Yeah, so my thought process is, is how did that attorney do it, overlooking the covenant?
Yeah, best guess would be that there would be no mortgage on it, so that nobody was protecting the interest, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, I know, but like even if you're buying something cash, you want to do a title search, you know?
I don't think there's money transferred.
Oh.
I think it was a transfer of the title, saying, yeah, can you finish it?
You could add it. Yeah, probably just some quick claim deed that just pushed whatever I own in my interests.
I didn't hear that.
I remember seeing something somewhere.
I believe.
Something like sixty grand or something.
I thought I saw something like $20,000 in exchange.
Or maybe like thirty, something small, but not, not small, but small.
Yeah.
I thought, anyway.
Come on in, you're up.
I'm ready. Hi. I just have to come, so.
Yep. We actually have some news for you this time, too.
So it was sent to them, right? Mm-hmm.
It was sent to the original developers, that's Mr. Goodman's the original developer.
Okay.
So it says right in black and white that he is still responsible in this letter, which I think was really good.
It's awesome. So he's already received this letter telling him he's responsible several times?
So that has been discussed, Kyle's brought that up pretty quickly, that this, it does say that we will be going forward within 30 days, but doesn't exactly say what we'll be doing.
Okay.
So in the 30 days, and we assume that we do not hear back from him, it's gonna have to go through court. So the town will take on the responsibility to fix the road and then go after him for the money.
Okay. Because generally, his MO is, in about two weeks, he'll get back to you, tell you he's gonna get something done and then disappear again.
I think we're braced for that, if you know what I mean, just based off the way everything's gone before. The thing I like about this, the only thing I see that it's different than any other letter, is this clearly tells that guy he's still responsible. I'm not, yeah, I don't think that we really had that confirmed before this letter. So I think that's really the only difference in this letter than the other ones. It's still a hey, do it or else letter, but...
Right. And the fact, yeah, the fact that he had two years, and he sold it more than two years ago. That's it, buddy? You're done?
Yep.
Mark, as a point of clarification, I don't think the town's automatically just gonna do the repairs, because I think we have to have a town vote to spend money and allocate it to fixing the road and do some other things.
I think that's what we discussed last time, I think that's in vain, is that...
I think that is next town meeting, yeah.
Okay. So we'll just kind of see where this guy goes. Get prepared to get in on the town meeting docket.
Yep.
Make sure we have the people's vote. Okay.
Yeah, so the next hearing that we have is on February 6th. Unfortunately, it's a couple days before his deadline comes up, so we're not gonna have a definitive answer on necessarily what the next steps are gonna be at the next hearing.
Okay, so two from now, though?
Yeah.
Okay. So I plan on being here a little over a month, you know, and we'll see what happens. Okay. Thank you guys for your help.
You're welcome.
Step by step, in the right direction.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Do we need to vote to pick the alternate date for the joint meeting with the selectmen for appointing the board members?
Yeah.
Do we have to wait later to get them to do that? Do we have to do that now? I'd say there's a problem with that date, I don't think.
I do know that the board believes that I'm up at 7:15.
Ah, I was just gonna ask that.
I expect that we, um, what's it, Fabrowski? Fabrowski, Tim Fabrowski said we gotta come out at 7:05. Put him into 7:05, we'll need what you want at 7:15.
At 7:15, on the...
Twenty.
Twenty.
Right.
Does that time and date work for everybody?
We have 7:15 as the first one?
Well, the interview would be 7:05, and then we would have a joint at 7:15.
Let's have that. Everybody got moved up, right? Not just Tim Fabrowski?
Well, we have the others last night, everybody else.
Oh, okay.
I believe already he was up on YouTube, so if I'm able, take a popcorn, take a look at the interviews.
Sometimes they come up really quick.
Is that a good one?
As far as meetings go?
Yeah.
It was a meeting.
Basically the same, same one that we had when everybody came in individually, I imagine, right?
Yeah.
Same thing.
So we want to make a motion to attend that meeting, to have that meeting?
Is that something we do need to make a motion on?
Yep.
Make a motion, we hold a planning board meeting, joint with the selectmen, on Tuesday, January 28th, starting at 7:05 PM?
What time's your meeting start?
Seven, usually we start at seven thirty, but we ended up starting earlier than that.
I would just say seven, and we can be in attendance for the whole thing. At seven o'clock?
Yep.
Have a motion?
Seven, not 7:15, okay.
Well, for our meeting to start.
Okay. I understand, I have to be there at seven.
Because we have to post, no, we have to post the meeting if...
If we're all gonna be in the same place.
Meet there, so. Their meeting starts at seven, we'll just post our meeting at seven, not wait anybody that gets there.
Okay, and we can still open when we get there?
Yeah.
I'll second the motion for seven o'clock on the 28th.
Okay. Have a motion seconded, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay, Joanne, could you post that meeting?
How soon after that meeting does the person become part of the board, is that immediate?
It's one morning. So I don't think Barbara's gonna be there, but if she came in the next day, it could be sworn in. So the next meeting starts...
February? February 6th? Yeah, so the interviews were the other night, so like you said, that's, if you want to...
I'll take a look.
Take a look at the interviews.
Did I meet everybody anyway?
Yeah.
They all came through here, well, yeah.
The three that were there came here.
I thought there was another girl that, or a woman, that was applying, just didn't like... Am I wrong?
She applied to the zoning board, you know, to the planning board, but she hasn't been scheduled yet, or... I just asked about that today, I've never heard anything more since she's sent down a bankroll. I've never met her.
Does she need to do something else to get on this agenda?
Well, I ordered, I'm voting for her application, obviously. I gave it to them, and I asked them, did you want to, you could always do it if you wanted to, but the board didn't give me any options, so I never set up anything.
Got this board never responded?
No, I gave it to my board, I'd send it to you all, too.
Okay.
But in terms of curvy, if you might slightly, they never said yes, please set it up, so I never set it up.
Because I thought we kind of put a date on by, so I mean, the thing of it is, you just keep taking, and keep pushing it down, or...
Yeah, at some point, you have to hold a hearing like we're here, right?
Yeah, so...
That's fine.
I mean, I guess I wouldn't be opposed if somebody else wanted...
At this point, it probably doesn't make sense. Yeah, we've got four, four people that are interested, I think that's more than we possibly, yeah.
Did Don Triani send in a Azbilly?
He did not.
Yeah, okay.
He hasn't responded in quite a while.
Okay.
And then, like I said, I sent him the schedule that we have, so then he could choose a convenient date, but I still haven't heard back from him.
Okay. And then Franklin Street Solar, we're supposed to have somebody coming in, or...
Are you, I'm not sure, we never heard anything back from them either, that's why it says to be determined on the...
They didn't, they didn't bring in a plan?
Nothing, never heard back from them. We were just hoping they may just show up, but they obviously haven't, haven't received anything back from them.
Okay.
I guess they may, they had some contention on it, but as of this afternoon, he still hasn't received anything.
Okay. That's what you guys are here for?
That's what we're here for.
So...
Is that a new project, have we already heard the site plan portion of it, or is this a very big one?
No, it's the solar project that's been approved. Moving forward? There's no, no activity.
Did they submit a Form A?
No, they haven't submitted it, it says it...
Said they were going to.
This is the project where they're trying to get that other house. Is that the one where they wanted to get that regular host lot?
They wanted to get the retreat lot.
Okay, that's what it was.
Oh, yeah, they had the one point of access, like, yeah, let's just carve off the property on the side here, yeah. Did they submit something back then, or did they just pull something out for conceptual to run there?
No, they, they were presenting the Form A that was signed before, and they were trying to divide that out of that property. Because originally, that whole solar thing was all combined, that was their access.
Right.
The solar company still hasn't purchased that lot, so it's still two separate lots.
So they're trying to combine it from the Form A, is that what they're maybe doing?
No.
Maybe.
It's our assumption.
Yeah. We'll find out someday, right?
It was a Form A to begin with, why do they have to now combine it, that's what the question was.
So did it used to be one lot that they turned into two?
No.
Okay.
But they presented as using both lots for, one for access and one for the project.
Right.
Under purchase and sale, you know, it hadn't formally gone through with that.
Right.
And then once that went through, they, no, they went through zoning to try to get the variance, use the front lot for access to the back lot.
Yes. So they haven't put any infrastructure or notes back there or anything?
No, we still got the moat running all along the property, behind the hill. We had temporary bridge across the river, which has been there for a year and a half, so it's all washed out. All the soils are washing into the river. Nobody seems to care.
So they started doing some earthwork, or just moving around?
They haven't done any, haven't been there for a year and a half.
Cut the trees down, and that was it.
Okay, so they did start something?
Yeah, they cleared it, yeah, since, oh, last August of 2018, they finished declaring.
Did they put any erosion controls in back then?
There is, yeah, yeah.
But it's not working, is what I'm...
Not, not along the river, no, it's not.
Did you guys talk to conservation about that?
We haven't been before conservation, just because this process was ongoing, but we're getting close to that, yeah, so.
Yeah, because they would be the ones to see if there's any violations and act accordingly there.
Try to be good neighbors.
We wish they did the same.
Reciprocal would be nice.
So, I don't think there's anything to talk about here, yeah.
So what exactly were they proposing to do tonight?
We don't know. All we had on here was 241 Franklin Street Solar Project Form A. They didn't send in a Form A, we assumed that they'd bring one in tonight and present it, so.
No, no, I'm not a businessman, but I don't know how this all works, I hear it's...
Yeah, it's all frustrating on all sides, right? Maybe we'll come, maybe we won't.
They went back before conservation to try and get permission to cut into the wetlands to prevent shading, which they didn't actually allow. They let them go into the buffer zone and just cut off the tops of the trees.
It's gonna kill the trees, isn't it?
Which they haven't done, yeah.
Absolutely, they haven't done that either, but they do have permission to do that.
Okay.
And I think you, they're just gonna cut off the top 30 feet of all the trees.
Polling, they call it polling.
I mean, the trees are just gonna die.
Polling.
That's more than seasonal pruning, right?
Yeah. And it's just never enough, every time they get something that, they look for something else, looking for something else. I don't know.
I haven't heard of that. Yeah, is it all pine trees, or is it all...
Yeah, mostly pine.
Top 30 feet is the only part that's green.
Yeah.
And there it is.
I guess that's it.
Until next time, right?
Charlie, is there any knowing from the, from the selectmen, why, why they're not going forward with anything at this time? Does it have anything to do with pilot programs having a problem?
Because we got a pilot done, like our...
Oh, it's all done?
Agreed for, it's probably been a year, since we were signed.
Do you think they could be waiting for the state legislature as well?
Unless they think they're going to do legislation regarding solar, it'd be, I mean, they...
No, I was just asking if you, you know, like based on everything that we heard the other night.
That was for the River Street one.
Yeah, no, I know.
So, you know, that's a possibility, sure, but they've not been in communication with us, they signed pilot, that's the other one. It's a contract, so they want to try and void the contract, they'll have difficulty doing that.
Right. Even if, like say in the future, if the legislation goes through that solar can't be taxed, would it then still uphold?
I would say so, yeah, again, you signed that contract.
No, I know, but I didn't know if like the law changed, you know?
I could take a look, but I don't think, I don't think someone trying to avoid it is going to, they're gonna run into problems doing that. Because if they're, let's put it this way, there are pilots across the state right now. So if all these solar, I mean, for instance, we've got the lot on Route 58, we did, they're making the teams, you know, when they're supposed to be making them.
Just kind of a concern for the future?
Why does that pilot expire, Charlie?
Well, power expires, I mean, from years.
Does it expire from 20, 20 years from the date of signing, or 20 years from the date that they would install?
Right, from basically when, when does the power roll out, when does, I have to rotate.
Yeah, no, I don't need the date, I was just meaning like, does it start?
No, I just don't know.
No, I don't, I'm just happy.
But I can look it up, or I can just, you all have the answer.
I was just saying, I don't know.
Is that impacting the second phase of what's happening on River Street?
For solar?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that, we had, it was a conversation, but we, you know, River Street seems to be trying to go through the process without doing a pilot, in which case they pay the property taxes, but then no power for the payment for that, saying in essence that it's illegal for us to be charging property taxes on it, because your legislature and the courts are balancing everything all over the place on this.
Okay.
But they were talking about, they did the build-in permit?
Yes.
And paid that fee, would that, would that be comparable to what they would have paid?
Not a little long haul, they paid $90,000 for panels, but I'm making it up, let's say $5,000 a year, it's $500,000 one side, or the course of the contract.
So there would be a great savings.
Yeah.
If they could beat it.
If they end up not having any property taxes.
So on those pilot programs, do we have any money that we put aside in a, like an emergency decommissioning, just in ca...
There's a bond for that, so we would apply for it.
Okay. Do you think that with solar panels having a hazardous risk stamp on them now, that it'll be... Okay. Do you think that with solar panels having a hazardous risk stamp on them now that it'll be enough?
I don't know. I mean, unfortunately, trying to know twenty years from now what the conditions are going to be for disposal of those panels is very difficult.
Yeah. But the bond would be able to be cashed if they didn't do it?
Correct.
And then you'd be able to take the land or something of that nature?
Well, the land is owned by, I don't know if the land is owned by them. I don't know.
I think they leased it, I believe.
So it's gonna be, there may be an interest, for instance, the property owner may be saying to them, uh, guys, you're gonna get rid of this stuff? So aside the town having the decommissioning, the landlord is gonna have an interest.
I only bring it up because of that, remember I was talking about the wind farms the other night in Kingston? So, you know, but we, nobody expected that business to go out.
Right.
You know, so then they didn't, they owed the town six hundred thousand still and now.
Were those on town property?
They owed, I, I don't know a hundred percent of where, like who owns the land that they were on.
There's one that's on town property.
Oh, okay.
The one that's right near the highway. That's the one that has, the company went under.
Yes, and that's.
The other three are running.
Those are O'Donnell's, right?
O'Donnell's are the other three.
Yeah.
So that one by the highway, that, they owe the town of Kingston six hundred thousand and they only had ten thousand from a pilot and now they do have to decommission? And pay the electric bill.
Where the town could just take over the windmill, I imagine, right?
Well, I think that one of the reasons why it's not happening is there were enough, I believe there were whole battery complaints.
From the neighbors and like, you're in all right.
And I think that the, I think, if I remember correctly, it got shut down basically sort of as a, or there was an order of the coroner, or whatever, it was town boards and Kingston. Because of the nuisance file.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was more complicated than just the company didn't want to run it.
Well, they went out of business too, yeah.
Well, I mean, I think they set up companies so that if there is a problem, they can.
Go out of business.
Go out of business and not wipe out their whole.
That's sad.
Deal. Well, I mean, I think it's the way it works. All right.
Take care.
So moving on. We have minutes for approval?
I apologize. I started doing a lot of work on those, but my mom's boyfriend passed away and it's been excruciating amount of things that I had to do, so.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Hey, one was pulled off. That's fine.
I'll get to it this week.
Well, there's two that are in there. If I remove the line, remember there was one on the line that was redundant about Gordon, we're kidding himself, so I took out that one line. But we would have asked how that sounded when it was, and the other one was off, I guess. You just remember what, it wasn't on the agenda, so you couldn't sign the last one.
Ah.
The, the last meeting.
Right. But I think they were both, were fine. You just wanted that one line removed from.
Which one was that? I'm sorry. The second or the?
I think that's the twenty first is the one that she just, just took out the Gordon.
Right, it was at the beginning and then we actually.
Now I know what you're talking about. Yeah, I remember that.
It was the twenty first. I believe the, the second was fine. And the other one we were waiting on, and then I have two more that I'm working on right now to be up to date. So Gordon has two sets to reach that, so it's gonna be fine.
Do you have a twenty first? I've got a copy tab.
Okay.
Yeah, those are, everybody has copies. Gordon just has the official ones. They're there. It's gonna be fine. One for the floor and one for.
If you guys are still reading, I'm okay with that twenty first.
Twenty first?
Awesome.
Can we move?
Are you here on the second as a, as a member?
On the second? Yes.
We don't necessarily list all the private citizens that were here, do we?
Um, not in the minutes, but usually.
If you participate in the conversation, would you get listed in the beginning? I don't think you did on the second, right?
You don't get listed in the beginning.
So why do we list Gordon and his attorney? Is it because they have a speaking role and they spoke during the?
Maybe when they were introduced.
I think it's because they are abbreviated later on. So later on, they would only be referred to as Quesos, so I think that's why it's clear.
No, I think it's a good thing to identify at the beginning.
Yes.
Kind of like a key of people.
Charlie, December second, I was present for the meeting. I didn't participate in the meeting. I shouldn't vote or accept these minutes, right?
If you were there.
I mean, I was there, but I didn't.
I understand what you're saying.
I recused myself, so.
I know that. Oh.
You must have at the beginning.
I mean, I don't have to because there's three of them here.
That might just be best, huh?
There's no real necessity, so that the two other members have it.
Yeah.
What was that?
I was present, but I wasn't, because that meeting was just Amanda's way. So I recused myself for that.
Okay.
So you guys can vote.
Because we've opened the planning board session with you.
No, we did open it and then I recused myself.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, well.
Because it says you recuse yourself after.
That was, that was a meeting where we did other things included. Yep.
So it's fine the way it's written.
I don't recall not, um, not saying anything to go back into a regular meeting.
What's that?
It says that I have no response on going back into the regular meeting. That's, that's not, that's not true.
On the twenty first?
Yeah. I abstained on the meeting because I thought they should have, and I always feel that way, should send all the plans out to me about her, but. And I've said that in multiple different things that have happened here, but one here on the second to go back into reopen to a regular meeting, I, I didn't have no response. I was probably like more quiet, but I didn't have no response, I know that.
Maybe it just wasn't audible.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to change it, I can.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just opted it up.
We're talking the last part when we adjourn at eight fifty two?
No, it says that I have no response on coming back to the regular meeting.
Oh, the twenty first.
Right, yeah.
I wouldn't, I would not go on that.
You just want that line removed. You could just cross it off and I can just.
Yeah, I want it.
Is everyone else all set on the December second?
You guys do that one now.
Okay.
I was finished with twenty first.
Do I do the twenty first?
I just have, um.
With, with that change?
Yeah.
So do a motion with that change?
Yeah, I, um, I'll do a motion with that change that I have no response and that I abstained from the, I mean, our state hearing. Um, and not no response.
Okay, have a motion as your second.
Just to clarify, it's just the last one.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I don't care what, what changes. Right, yeah. Just right here. No response.
I can show it to you so people can see it.
I don't think you, you didn't vote on the first part. I don't think.
I abstained from the public hearing.
Abstained.
But I'm a second to go back into the regular meeting.
Yeah, yeah. What's the difference between abstaining and no response?
Regular meeting.
I think that it, I thought it was just the way that we, that, I thought that was determined.
Yeah, I think that's the term for not responding, right? Because you're not voting no, you're not voting yes, you're just not voting.
Fix that one the way you want it.
Do I?
Yeah, do.
Oh, do I sign?
Well, we.
We're all gonna sign it.
So with those changes, I have a motion as your second?
I'll second.
Second.
All those in favor? Do you still have a question?
Yeah, my question, all you're doing is changing no response to abstained.
Right.
And then taking out no response on the second line.
And changing this to three.
Probably go back into the regular meeting.
Okay, to go back to the regular meeting. She's gonna make the change on that one.
Do you want me to, do you want us to sign it?
I didn't know if you wanted to give the change or not, so I'll do the changes and reject it, but, um.
We're gonna sign it now, can't we? I just don't think we want to vote on it again next time. We just want to be done with it.
If you want to, yep, that's fine.
Yeah, we can, we can vote on it with those changes.
Yeah.
I didn't know if you.
So I have motion as second, all those in favor?
I.
I, I think I, I think Mark. I have a ready, I have a ready.
I have a blue one.
Thank you.
We're gonna sign that one, right?
This is the original, okay.
Do you want us to just sign that one or?
So this is the one that changes, we have the changes?
Yeah. And then you just do another copy and the next time we'll just sign it the next time?
That's the case, why don't we just wait till next time?
Well, I mean, we.
Yeah, if you want to do that, I could stamp them if you want with the signatures. It's up to you.
No, I'm not signing it.
So I need, um, yeah, two official ones, so I need two of each signed.
Yeah, that's, you've got one.
This is a copy. These, the ones that are not.
No, I gave you one.
Prefer that we get a clean version? Is that your point? We'll just get a clean version and then sign it?
Seems easiest.
It doesn't make any difference.
Make the change, we'll sign it.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we've approved it, so the next time, we'll just sign it.
Okay.
Is that fine?
Sure.
So I'll just change that.
It's just the back page.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, I'll pull it up.
So then I just have one set that'll do, uh, two copies, so I have a second.
I gave you the two that were in here.
These are the ones we're changing though, right? The 21st?
Yeah, that's all the 21st.
So, I thought, okay, please, you haven't decided on the show. Okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was wrong.
Is it true that there are a card of an eighty-one X plan for approvals on the road?
It sounded like that was some legal thing that was beyond us.
I think that we still have to sign it from what I was reading, like, that it still has to go through the selectmen of town and, like, a town meeting. And, that boy.
I remember what the eighty-one X plan was. I knew at the time and.
But it does have to go through town meeting.
Yeah, it just doesn't have to be endorsed by subdivision control. Uh, maybe that's, what is the layman's term of?
It's the other way, yeah. It's like you either go through subdivision control or there's, I think, what is it? What do we determine that night? There's an eighty-one X, and then there's an eighty-one other one too, right? There's another cut, another eighty-one plan.
I would only caution if you're gonna discuss anything to do with amended states, that it should be on the agenda.
Oh, I was just looking at the plan, um, at the.
Yeah, more of a general question of the eighty-one X, not necessarily of how it pertains to the project.
Yeah, I was just trying to ask in general.
Jolly, you informed us of a open meeting violation?
Mm-hmm.
That's not on our agenda, or is that something they?
Well, you didn't know about it within forty-eight hours, so you're still safe to talk about it in a sense of, the agenda is a list of items that you reasonably expect to discuss at this meeting. So if in forty-eight hours you didn't know about it, you didn't have a chance.
Within forty-eight?
Yep. So you can, you know, someone came in today, yesterday, they didn't expect.
Walked in.
You don't get too far down the road with it, in a sense of, you know, basically what the AG's office says is that you should be cautious about how much decision-making conversation you have about it. In a sense of, is it, uh, is it a decision or a matter that's of general interest to the public? If you can delay it to the next meeting, you can do that. If it's more specific, you need, or just you could do something about it, not make a decision, but in a sense of, for instance, refer to town council as an example.
Yeah.
That would be legit.
Okay.
Can we discuss what this violation is, or?
Did everybody get a copy of it?
Yeah.
Are we done with the minutes just before we go on?
Yeah.
Good point.
Um, I just wanted to add that the, um, on the first page, the peer review documents could not be provided, which is what I had asked. And so I think that it's important that the peer review documents could not be provided. They didn't have them. And on the second page, um, Dan Borzani was, sorry, sorry, was talking about condos. And, um, Quezwell stated that they didn't, that, that had nothing to do with this project. I wrote it all down.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm just declaring to them, but I, I wrote it down for you.
Alright, so deal with that one, redo them, rather than signing them with changes, we'll just.
Yeah.
It just seems easy. I have them printed out, and then we'll sign it, done.
Amy, you mind if I just see what those changes are, so I don't have to think about it next time?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I'm just kind of half listening.
You bet.
Do we vote on that as is, or with the changes there, or do you want to write till it gets re-tagged?
Good with the changes.
Yeah, I'm down with that.
Good with the changes.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the agenda for December 2nd, 2019.
Meeting minutes.
Meeting minutes?
Yeah.
Sorry, motion, did I say it wrong? Motion to accept the meeting minutes from December 2nd, 2019.
Is a motion as yours?
With the changes.
Okay, is a motion as a second?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstained.
The open meeting thing, what was, uh, what was the complaint there? I wonder if I have a copy of that in the packet? If you have that, I'll just have to submit.
I think it, it starts out like this.
What, what do you want this?
Want it?
Yeah. So a lot of curiosity in the future. I don't know if we can discuss this now if the notification hasn't been given, but should we as a practice just send emails directly to Joanne as like a one-way communication? Is that how we're supposed to communicate?
Well, just to Joanne would be fine, but when you're, if you're doing it to all the members, then that's when you start running into a problem. So for instance, let's say that you said, let's say there was a Jones subdivision.
Yeah.
That was ongoing. So, yo, I'd like to put the Jones subdivision on the agenda for the next week. Sending it to everybody would be perfectly fine. But if you then get into, I think there are all these things wrong with this Jones subdivision, and we need to do something, something, something. That's when you're getting into the deliberations part. That's the difference.
Okay.
So we shouldn't use reply to all?
Well, you should be sending it out to everybody, other than if you're setting up the agenda items, saying like, Jones subdivision should be on the agenda for next week.
That's okay.
That's okay.
If Gordon were to have sent that email directly to Amy, would that have been okay?
The one email by itself would have been fine, possibly, but the beginning email, what Amy sent was sent to everybody.
Right. No, but my question is, so if Amy sent the general email to Joanne essentially saying, hey, here's these things that we want to address, I got these questions.
If it was only to Joanne, it would have been fine.
Oh, no, but she can't.
But it wouldn't have been able to have been in, in the group. So she wouldn't have been able to address Joanne, but had it sent to all three of us.
But there's no inherent violation necessarily just by CCing us on the information she's requesting. It's the fact that there was a discussion after that.
You know what, also, you're getting into.
The initial one also.
You're like complaints about this, 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 and this.
Yeah, okay.
Now, if she'd said, I'd like this matter without going into the specifics of it, on why I want this matter on the agenda for the next meeting, could send it to all of you, say to Joanne, please put it on the agenda, that would have been fine.
Just seems to me, it's a lot easier just not to use email.
That and a lot of these things were, are already known to everybody, and I was just trying to see what could be done, so it is like putting it on the agenda.
Well, except you didn't ask for anything to be placed on the agenda.
I was replying to an email from Joanne and the rest of them.
Yes, I understand that, but it was a very simple question that Joanne asked, and it wasn't of all the things you mentioned.
So this happens a lot, as far as in the beautification committee, there's ongoing conversation back and forth. I don't get involved. Um, I don't answer a lot of emails. This was one email that I replied to, and it was agenda items that I want addressed.
Well, Sutcliffe didn't say that.
But I did, I did ask for action.
Okay, but you didn't say, you place this particular item, I'd like to discuss my complaint about Terry or no, I'd like to discuss it at the meeting on such and such a day, period.
Well, that's what I was meaning, and I was missing one sentence then.
Well, no, because then you went into a barrel full of comments and deliberations and everything else. If you don't think you violated the open meeting law, you know, that's up to the planning board to make that decision.
Two of the people accused of violating it are on the plan.
Oh, that's why it came in. That's why, that's why it came in.
So what the process is, is that there's a complaint, it's brought to the committee or board where the event happened. They make a decision in terms of a reply. That person, who sent in the complaint, in this case myself, either satisfies or the reply, or can bring it to the attorney general's office. You might want to consult with town council. That's why I gave you council's information.
As, as a board?
Yep.
Board can reach out to Larry Mayo, ask for advice.
Can we go ahead and just do that?
Well, I would say, you know, maybe set it up for the next meeting.
But can we not just move this along and just have him take a look at it, if I'm just talking about it now, without getting into the nut, the weeds about the actual complaint?
I see no problem with that, even with that not being on the agenda, 'cause all we're doing is asking for advice for next meeting, 'cause...
Well, I mean, I think it should be put on the agenda for the next meeting, and then you could reach out and ask him to have his comments for the next meeting, I would think, if that would be fine.
Yeah.
Just, just so that you're aware, I only did it because I thought that's how everybody was doing a communication. I wasn't trying to have like a conversation with everybody, I was trying to bring up points that I wanted to bring up, like, the letter not being in the thing, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to get everything clear. But I wasn't trying to have like an open meeting. I didn't reply to anything even after that, as you can see, so I wasn't trying to...
I don't think you were trying to do anything intentionally there.
I was not.
No, I think this is just one of those, like, silly technical things that come up later.
Yep, and I will no longer reply to email.
But I would just suggest, as the board, reach out to Larry Mayo and just...
Just so we handle it properly. Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that. And that's why I think that we can probably get that all rolling now, right, and then hopefully next week, next meeting.
We have his opinion, we could have an educated discussion.
Okay.
So, is that something we can have a motion on?
Yeah.
Tonight?
Yeah.
Or that's okay?
Make a motion.
I'm not making a final decision about anything, I'm just asking for assistance from council, that's great.
Do we need to put it on the agenda officially, or just automatically?
Well, you should put it on the...
For the next...
Somebody's gonna be, you know, you're just, you know...
So, we can just put it on the agenda without a motion, or do we have to...
Well, I mean, we could say right here that we want, you know, as a board, you want it on the next...
Make a motion to...
Right here, so...
Yeah, make a motion to contact Larry Mayo in regards to the open meeting law complaint, and also schedule the discussion for the next planning board meeting.
Is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, in the future, I guess, if I had some comments on that cluster development bylaw, I should only send that to Joanne. I should not CC Gordon as the chairman, I should not do any of that stuff.
Well, you can, this, you can, two people can talk to each other in this committee here. You can, that's not a core, I mean, if you involve three of you, that's the core. So, if you went to simply go in and you went back and forth several times without bringing the other two members into it, that's fine. Once you involve the third member, that's when you run into a meeting.
So, if I did CC everybody on my comments to Joanne, and allowed everybody to see them, that would theoretically be a violation?
I think we've all had that happen throughout this past fall.
I don't do emails.
No, I'm not, but you never reply, but...
He doesn't even have an email.
You gotta tell him, like you...
I got two or three that you gotta hand out every once in a while.
Has it ever been open?
He has a bunch of burner accounts.
Alright, is that it? Are we gonna send bills to pay or anything? Oh, yeah, did you end up getting ahold of...
I did not get in touch with him. I didn't.
What about...
I think that's...
Do we wanna pay it, or...
This is on 250 industrial dr... Oh, that was, oh...
That was in response.
Right, thank you, yeah.
You wanted something in writing from the building.
Thank you. I forgot what it was. Okay. Thank you.
Which building is that?
Do we wanna pay this?
I think that's the T one, right, where my time used to be.
I mean, I went to the zoning board the other night, and they were on the agenda, but they, um...
That, um, it doesn't have the name or anything.
Trying to picture, is it in the Liddell Industrial Park?
Old, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yes, it didn't actually run into them then?
It was the one that, the T.
Came in and explained.
The T?
I think they were storing T.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Grocery.
Anyway, the traffic.
Grocery.
Special T's.
T's, not DT, not the NDTA.
No.
I think that, I don't think any of us feel comfortable paying that bill until we figure out what's going on, or see that it's actually right, so...
Yeah, I think we're all on the same page.
I'm sure it stinks that, the, I mean, we never hold off on paying anybody, like, this is, but I think there's something wrong with that.
Shoot me an email tomorrow, so we remind you, will ya?
Go ahead and CC me on that.
So, I'm saving you.
The charge is wrong? You think that they're charging you too much?
No, the estimate was wrong.
What they did wasn't right, so how is, how could the price be correct, or...
I'm sure the price is correct, but...
I mean, I, I, I think that they said there's like a lot of bill that needed to be brought in, so I guess that, I mean, I don't...
No, I'm just saying, I, I don't think that we should pay them, 'cause that's not really what, like, they didn't do what we needed. Like, they did, they didn't really do what we asked them to do, or didn't do it accurately, so I think they should either clarify, redo it, or, and I certainly don't wanna pay this bill, and then have them say, oh, yeah, sure, we can fix that and do it correctly, and then send us a second bill, where if we don't pay them this time, they kinda have to give us what we requested the first time. See what I'm getting at?
Well, you pay it, did you wanna get a call back?
I'll, I'll call them tomorrow.
I mean, I think that would get up, get paid out of the Scott Burgess's...
Oh, it does.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I don't pay them, and then have them say, oh, yeah, well, I can fix that, and then we'll get a second bill, where I think that should have been addressed the first time.
Yep, that's, that's a good way to put it.
Did we let them know that the estimate was wrong, or was that when you were just talking about it?
Yeah.
Is that it?
Ah, there is one more motion?
What I was saying, that, that they had a, um, petition for the zoning board for what they wanted to do down there, and they canceled that the other night, so...
Wanted to do down there?
Oh, oh, on that.
Yeah.
You sent it?
Uh, Scott, they're just...
Oh!
Come on, he went back, he was gonna change.
Did he ever actually go in front of the zoning?
No, he, um, um, I don't know, so...
What's your?
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
So, nothing to speak of there, huh?
Yeah, I, I, well, I don't know if they're gonna come back, they may come back, yeah, with something else to do, I don't know.
'Cause he was trying to do the multifamily, right?
Trying to do a duplex.
Yeah. Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Can I just ask your question, I'm sorry? I, I don't know if I just missed your, um, discussion on the, um, meeting with Amy Questle. I posted that because, because of the holiday, I wouldn't have had enough time if I didn't, so you're welcome to, Gordon, obviously, it had to be posted.
The 21st.
So, that's right.
Okay, and that's in the Great Hall that...
It's the 21st, it's in the packet that they're having the bylaw changing, um, meeting.
Okay.
I sent, I should email to you, but I know a lot of you don't get a chance to read it, so I just posted this.
Was changed, me?
Yeah, yeah, I remember, it was canceled, and it's the 21st, and, right?
The 21st, right. And I don't know if you wanted me to post, um, for the wage and personnel meeting, do you want me to post it in case you...
We didn't talk about that.
In case you go, are you all got a copy of that, too?
Yeah, I saw, I did see that, and...
That's it, January 20th. So, it's pretty much everything in New York.
What, was that for?
For the meeting.
Wage and personnel.
To raise our wages?
Triple?
Personnel.
Triple?
I'm gonna stop paying, there you go.
Went for double last year.
It, what, what is the wage and personnel, uh, meeting for with the planning board? What is, what is it for?
Is it a general meeting, or...
Yeah, it's a general, so basically, what they do is they announce all the possible changes that were brought in during that process. So, the deadline of bringing amendments to bylaw was the end of December, and then they have a public hearing to read all of the amendments. If not, isn't necessarily anything specific to the...
Planning board.
Yeah, to bylaw and to the wage and personnel.
Okay. And you were talking about posting in meetings, if we were gonna go? Do, do we have three people that are looking to go?
And do you think you're, I, just to go back to that meeting with Amy Questle, do you think three, you will go, or at least three, so...
Yeah, I'm gonna try to go to that.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's posted anyway, but I'm still, okay, so I'll go ahead and do the wage and personnel, just in case, sorry.
I probably will not, I don't know if...
Guys?
I might, I might go, just because, but it depends on work.
If there were only two of us, I don't think we'd need it.
Okay, so I'm...
Not worth posting up.
Okay.
I haven't been to one, so I might wanna check it out and see what it's about, so, I might go, depending on the...
Possibly.
Alright, you wanna re-motion?
No, it's already on the table. Is there a second?
I think you seconded it already, right?
All in favor?
So, what day is that, meeting?